Okay, Your Worship, I have 4:40. We are live streaming and recording, so whenever you're ready.
Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of council electronically via Zoom, February the 16th, 2021 at 4:40 PM. Meeting called to order. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda.
Moved by Rick Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on February 16th, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM, be approved as circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Motion carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest. I declare I may have a pecuniary interest depending on a motion on item 12.2, the Integrity Commissioner Report. Any other pecuniary interest noted? None noted. Petitions and delegations? None noted. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held February 2nd, 2021, and that council accept the minutes of the following committee meetings, minutes of the Kirkland Lake Library Board meeting held November 19th, 2020.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communications, item 6.1, verbal COVID update, Ms. Sackrider.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to council. I believe the majority of our residents are pleased that as of today, the District of Tumaskamine has moved into the green level of the COVID-19 framework. This means that municipal offices are now open to the public for regular business. Town Hall is open for payment of tax bills and water bills from 8:30 AM until 3:00 PM, Monday to Friday. Public Works and Development Services do recommend that an appointment is made prior to visiting. The Museum of Northern History will reopen to the public as of tomorrow. Hours of operation are Tuesday through Friday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM, and Saturdays from noon until 4:00. The Joe Mavernat Community Complex is open for business. The gyms are open from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday to Friday, with reduced hours on the weekends. Fitness classes will resume next week. The pool has 23 different recreational swims offered throughout the week. Reservations are required and can be taken up to a week in advance. The phone has been ringing off the hook today, and swims are filling quickly. We will add more swims to satisfy the demand if required. Swim lessons will begin next week. Public skates are scheduled to begin this weekend. Minor hockey is getting back on the ice tonight. The skating club is getting back on tomorrow night. Rental for the pool or the arena are now available. Ski and snowshoe use is available seven days a week by reserving a time slot. Civic Ring is open 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week with our original scheduling. Heritage North can be booked for meetings or trainings. Various rooms can be used depending on the numbers in the group, and our largest room can accommodate up to 35 people. Masks are required in all our municipal facilities, and visitors must complete a screening prior to entering. Two-meter distancing is a requirement at all times. We do want to take this opportunity to remind everyone to follow the public health measures, including masking, physical distancing, hand washing, avoiding nonessential travel, and avoiding gatherings with people outside of your own household. With these steps in place, we're hopeful that our district will stay safely in the green zone. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Schumacher, Executive Director of Tech Pioneer Residence.
Thanks, Ms. Sackrider, Your Worship, through you to council. This is the verbal COVID-19 update for Tech Pioneer Residence. We're happy to report that the home is open to all visitors today, and visiting hours are from 10:45 AM until 6:45 PM. All visitors must show proof of a negative COVID swab completed in the previous two weeks. All visitors must be screened and have their temperature check taken prior to visiting any residence. Only two visitors are allowed to visit any resident at a particular time, and masks must be worn at all times when visiting residents. Staff testing continues to happen on a weekly basis, and the home is making plans to implement onsite rapid antigen testing over the course of the next two weeks. We are having a meeting tomorrow to discuss staffing and logistics for the home. All visitors and students will be required to have rapid antigen testing onsite prior to being allowed to visit any resident once we have that in place, and the expected wait time is about 30 minutes from the time of testing to the time they're allowed to visit residents. All staff will be having this rapid antigen testing done as well, initially once a week, and then ramping up to three times weekly on a non-sequential basis. The home continues to do all required infection control practices, hand hygiene, use of PPE including masks and eye protection, increased cleaning and disinfection of high-touch surfaces, and auditing all of our practices. Thanks so much.
Thank you. That's it for the COVID update. We'll have a motion to receive. Or we have a question, Counselor Casey Owens?
Yeah, so does this mean that starting next council meeting, we can resume in-person meetings at Town Hall?
I'll let Megan answer that.
Your Worship, through you to council, I might pass this on to Ms. Sackrider first.
Certainly. So what the legislation does let us know right now is that we are able to get together in groups. What the recommendations are is that we continue to do things virtually when possible. So this would be a decision of council if you would like to move back to in-person. If it is going to be done in person, the biggest requirement or recommendation that is coming from public health is to maintain that two meters. So we'd probably have to look at the council table a little bit better to get people spread out, especially with the variance of concern, the two meters is the primary concern. So this is something that council could discuss today or in the future. Just a reminder is that we are still trying to keep our exposure to others as limited as possible.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that while Zoom meetings are great, and they're great for giving us a way of conducting town business during the pandemic, they are not the same as in-person meetings. And I would like to put forward a motion that our next council meeting be held in the council chambers observing public health recommendations.
Do we have a seconder for that motion? Counselor Casey Owens?
Okay. So we have a motion moved by Rick Owens, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the verbal COVID-19 update be received, and that the next council meeting be held in council chambers observing public health recommendations.
Any further discussion? None noted. All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.2, request to waive the first right of refusal at 80 Prospect. Ms. McNaughton, Planning Administration.
Thank you, Your Worship. Hold on a second. You got that? Okay, sorry. Through you, Worship, to council, we received a request from Richard Shammyard Law in regards to a first right of refusal for a property at 80 Prospect Avenue. So in 2011, the municipality sold this property, and there was a building on it, and they required to have that building demolished. The structure was demolished in 2013. So I do not see a reason for us to purchase this property back. So I would say that we would be okay to waive our first right of refusal. That clause can remain on title for the next future seller as well. There is a restrictive covenant on the property, and it basically just says that there is a requirement for grading land properly and putting up a residential dwelling. So we're basically just asking if you guys would like to waive your right for the first right of refusal for this property.
From my point of view, I don't see any reason to have it remade on title. Basically, the owner has followed the the conditions that he purchased under, so I'm in favor of removing that. Any other comments or concerns? I have a see a hand, but oh, Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. We shouldn't have, you know what, if we're not going to be involved in a property, then we shouldn't have first word refusal on the property. It only makes it harder for the seller to sell, and harder for somebody to buy, so yeah.
I agree. Okay, do you want to come back with a motion later on that?
I have a motion, Your Worship.
Okay.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2021-dev-008, entitled "Request to Waive the First Right of Refusal at 80 Prospect Avenue," be received, and that staff be directed to respond to Richard and Shammyard Law to waive the first right of refusal for 80 Prospect Avenue.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3, request from Enbridge for maintenance dig agreement north of Swastika, Ms. McNaughton.
Thank you, Worship, through you to council. We received a request from Enbridge Gas to conduct some work north of Swastika. You may have seen this similar report last year, as we did enter into an agreement with them last year for this area. They are looking at expanding it to the west. So this is something that they periodically do, where they go in and they upgrade their lines and make sure everything's all in good working order. And when they do conduct this work, they are on our land, and there is a revenue associated with this request of $1,500. And it is something that they do periodically that we bring forward to council.
We've never had any issues with Enbridge meeting those conditions that we put forth?
We haven't received any concerns from the neighboring area in regards to this agreement.
Okay. Any further comments or concerns, questions? We have a motion.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that report number 2021-dev-007, entitled "Request from Enbridge Gas, Inc. for a Maintenance Dig Agreement North of Swastika," be received, and that staff be directed to present a bylaw to council to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the maintenance dig agreement with Enbridge Gas, Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.5, Council Information Request from the Police Service Board Recommendations, Mr. Riberti, Director of Public Works.
Sorry, Your Worship, I believe we skipped over 6.4.
Whoop, sorry, you were correct. Request to, item 6.4, request to amend the Parking Bylaw 15-017, Ms. McNaughton, sorry about that.
Can't get away that easily. So through you, Worship, to council, we are looking at requesting to amend the parking bylaw. So we do have two issues for this request. One is the new crosswalk at Second Street by the intersection of Churchill Drive. So this was recently installed to promote the active school travel and improve the pedestrian safety in the area. In order to have any enforcement around this section, we do need to place this within our parking bylaw. And in relation to this, it would be proposed to eliminate one parking space, and this is directly in front of Fern's Restaurant. It would not eliminate the accessible space, just the regular spaces in front. So there is that one, and then the second request as part of this is to change the speed limit along the connecting link on Highway 66. So as it sits, from Goldthorpe Road to the railroad tracks is our connecting link. Goldthorpe Road to Hilltop Drive is a 50. From Hilltop Drive to the Canadian Tire Gas Bar, it's a 60. And then from the Canadian Tire Gas Bar all the way to the tracks is a 50. So we are looking at changing this to a 50 so that it remains consistent and would have the same service level for the whole section of the connecting link. And this was something that was identified from the WSCS Consulting Service Delivery Review that was provided in December, that they noted that we do have two road classifications for connecting link, and it would make more sense to have one service level for that area. So the two requests are the installation for that, or adding the crosswalk, and then the speed reduction.
Any comments? I think, Ms. McNaughton, it makes a lot of sense, that change, because coming off of Goldthorpe onto Government Road, it certainly can be a little risky of people coming over the hill at a higher speed. So this will certainly slow down the traffic a bit and make it a lot safer. And Counselor Owens, please.
And are we going to advertise this, that like way ahead of time before this actually happens? Not like when the crosswalk went into service and all sudden cars are trying to come to a dead stop because someone is walking out in front of them? Me included?
Yes, through you, Worship, to council, we will definitely ensure that added, additional advertising is done for this. If this is acceptable for today, we can start advertising tomorrow, knowing that a bylaw wouldn't be presented until the next council meeting. So if that is the intent, we can definitely begin advertising by way of our radio and the municipal update and online.
Yes, perfect, because I was on the pedestrian side. I wasn't the driver. I was the one that the car was being aimed at when I tried to cross in. I could just imagine a kid or something not thinking, trying to cross the street without, like you press the peetone, the lights are on, you think you have it right away, then next thing you know, there's a car at you. It's a scary, scary sight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Owen?
Yeah. And I'll ask Ms. McNaughton to correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, it's my understanding that there's two parking spots in front of that restaurant. One is handicapped and one is regular. My, and with this change, we would be taking the regular away, but leaving the handicap. Is that going to create a blind spot for kids? You know, young kids like grade one and two that won't come above the height of a, certainly wouldn't come above the height of a pickup, and we have many, many pickups in town, and wouldn't come above the line of vision for many full-size cars. My concern is the safety of the kids. I, I would, I mean, I drove by there today and I looked at it. I'm concerned about the line of vision for the oncoming traffic to that crosswalk. I'd be more in favor of taking both those parking spots out. There's lots of parking around there. The handicap could be moved closer to the Encore and serve both facilities. I know it's less ideal than right in front of the business, but it would still be servicing the need, and it would open up the line of vision to our young children in the town to cross that crosswalk quite safely.
You had a comment, Ms. McNaughton?
Sure, through you, Worship, to council, we can definitely look at potentially moving or eliminating that accessible space if it is desirous by council. We did identify that the one parking space for sure needed to be eliminated for the sight line, but if council is desirous, we can definitely look at that and report back for our next meeting.
If I may comment on your suggestion, Counselor Owen. Moving up the accessible parking spot, you couldn't put it behind the Grant Building, so you'd have to go all the way up to the Encore, which is a long way from the restaurant if people are dropping off or going there and they're classified as requiring accessible parking. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, you don't have to go all the way to the Encore. I looked at it. There's room that would be 50/50. Also, I don't know. We, that handicap parking spot is servicing one business. One business. That's quite unusual. I'm not sure how that happened. Probably happened when the medical center was there. But right now, we have a handicap parking spot for one business, and if that's the case, then does that mean any business in town can ask for a handicap parking spot in front of their place and get it? Because we want to provide the same level of services to all our businesses. So I'm not sure. My biggest concern is for the safety of the kids. And like I say, you're going to have fairly short kids there crossing, and any parking there is going to block the line of vision. In the wintertime, your stopping distance is much longer than in the summertime. Kids go to school in the winter. They don't go to school in summer, so that's my concern.
Okay, we'll be going to, Counselor Shaba, first. Just to comment, Rick, on that, I believe, isn't there a veterinarian service in that building as well? So there are two people, not just one. The vets at the back or the side portion, there's a walkway there. At least, that's my understanding. Yeah. Counselor Shaba?
Okay, I just want to comment that the moving that accessibility parking lot, you're going to have issues because we have the loading dock that Home Hardware, they use on some of those transport trucks, they do need a lot of room to turn. So, you know, if they're delivering their stuff there, some of the times I noticed that they completely blocked the sidewalk. So it might not be practical to kind of move that thing far away towards the Encore Club. You may have maybe an obstruction, especially someone on a wheelchair trying to get out from that end and try to navigate through any transport truck that's loading or unloading onto that restaurant. So I just want to let you know that.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Counselor Owen. I think he's correct. I think that would improve the line of sight for people crossing. And I know it's kind of an off intersection. And I, you know, and I think you're right. It's one handicap parking spot in front of one business, or two businesses is, you know, I mean, downtown Kirkland Lake only has probably four for the entire road. So I, you know, I don't see where that would be of any difference than anywhere downtown. You can find a spot somewhere in that area and have it for the Encore Club and for Fern's Restaurant. Maybe it'll be a little closer to the old hospital, but I tend to agree. That's pretty much a one-off right there, just the way these streets intersect.
Ms. McNaughton, is it possible to have an accessible spot across the street in front of where the Ukrainian church is, which would be a lot closer to those two businesses?
I, Your Worship, I believe that area doesn't actually have parking because of the, how close the intersections are. So I don't believe that there is parking permitted, basically from the church over to station.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Owens?
Couldn't you just move the parking spot across the street, the first spot before the crosswalk, like across from the Encore Club? Like, I mean, there's a brand-new crosswalk that they could use, so they know traffic would eventually stop. It's the first parking spot to get out. The crosswalks there, the restaurant is right there, so it would seem more logical to put it on the west side of Churchill than on the east side.
Counselor White?
I think we've heard a lot of interesting ideas from council, but we could go ahead with the motion and maybe have staff bring back a report to the next meeting along with the bylaw. And that way, they'd be able to put it in with the bylaw coming to us next council meeting.
I would agree. Could we have a motion then to receive that report?
Yes, Your Worship, I'm just going to reword a couple things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, council. So I've taken the recommendation of to report back with the bylaw, as well as the recommendation of advertising to the public of these changes. So the motion, amended motion reads as moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2021-dev-005, entitled "Request to Amend Parking Bylaw 15-017," be received. That staff be directed to present a bylaw to amend the parking restrictions on Second Street and to reduce the speed on Government Road West, Highway 66, connecting link between Hilltop Drive and Canadian Tire Gas Bar. That staff be directed to report back to council with the presentation of the bylaw for potential changes to parking spaces on Second Street to permit this crosswalk. That staff be directed to advertise these changes to the community prior to the passing of the bylaw. And that staff be directed to present a consolidated parking bylaw repealing 15-017 and its amendments after all required road studies and reviews have been completed.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.5, Council Information Request from the Police Services Board, Mr. Riberti, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Worship, through you to council. Staff was directed to review the trail at First Street, which is a dead end, and also to review the the speed reduction between Goldthorpe Road and Archer Drive, which is on Highway 66. So we did review the trail. We looked at lighting. We looked at guardrail extension. It is located on a bedrock location. There's no stairways. There's no sidewalks downs, down below on Station Road. So at this point, we do recommend to extend the guardrail. Try to discourage the users to use that path because there is a safety aspect of it to deal with. Also, in regards to the speed reduction from an 80 to 60-kilometer zone, the ministry will be conducting a speed reduction study. They will review the transition limits and to ensure that we're doing, they're doing the proper thing in the speed reduction, and they will report back to us. So once I do have the information, I will bring back the information to council for further review. While I was in corresponding with the ministry, I've requested to review the population signage on Iowa 66 and 112, which population indicates 10,000 on several signs and 12,000 on one. And based on Stat, Statistic Canada, we're what, 7,000 or so. So basically they've, they've said that council should bring a request forward. But I would suggest that we wait until the census for this year is complete to proceed with the, the change of the signage.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
Not noted, Mr. Reverti?
I have a motion moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-pw-002m entitled Council Information Requests from Police Service Board Recommendations be received. That staff be directed to extend the guide rail system across the entrance of the trail at the end of First Street. That staff be directed to report back to council once the Ministry of Transportation has completed and shared the speed study results of Highway 66 between Archer Drive and Goldthorpe Road. And that staff be directed to submit a written request to the Ministry of Transportation on council's behalf to update the population signs on Highway 66 and 112 after the 2021 census is completed.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Reverti. Item 6.6. Tamiskaming Active School Travel Project Letter of Support, Ms. Sackrider.
Thank you, worship. Through you to council. The Tamiskaming Health Unit has successfully applied for a round two of funding from the Ontario Active School of Travel. They are set to receive $30,000 to enhance their active school travel programming in the district. What they are asking for at this time in order to receive the dollars, they do require a letter of support from the municipality as well as the school boards. So what they would use this money for, it's a very comprehensive bilingual communications campaign. They want to do website development. They want to do regional communication strategy. And what they want to do is they want to really raise the awareness to both the parents and to the students of the importance of active school travel. They've done a very comprehensive project plan that staff have been able to review. We feel that it fully supports what the town is, is trying to promote as well. They are definitely fostering culture of active and sustainable travel for the children. And some of the benefits of us having healthier children are that they're going to be able to concentrate more in school if they've been able to walk to and from school and hopefully be a little more settled at the end of the day. We'll also have less, less traffic congestion and less pollution. So staff do support this. We have created a letter of support for you to consider if you would like to support this endeavor by the Tamiskaming Health Unit.
Any comments or concerns? Makes a lot of sense. I think we should support. Counselor Ivanov?
Yeah, it does make a lot of sense and we should support it. It's a great project and I think our council should support this.
Thank you, counselor. We have a motion?
Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2021-cs-001 entitled Tamiskaming Active School Travel Project Letter of Support be received. And that council authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.7. Departmental Key Performance Indicators Quarterly Report Quarterly for 2020. Mr. Keith Gorman, Director of Corporate Services.
Thank you, worship. Through you to council. As with prior quarters in line with their strategic priorities, 2021 Corporate 006 essentially highlights our departmental reporting and our project status report for 2020. The report somewhat shorter than previous versions that you've seen. They would typically include financials as well. Given the timing of year end and our very recent finalization of negotiations, which are going to impact 2020, we felt it was best to hold off to wait towards the numbers being more final rather than put up a number that's preliminary and have it changed after the fact. In regards to the first attachment, which is the departmental KPIs, I won't touch on them in too much depth. I'll basically pass them over. But I'm sure at the end of the presentation that if you have any questions, members of the team would be glad to help and assist with those. In regards to the project status reporting, which is your attachment number two, as you can see, it was a pretty busy year as far as capital projects, particularly for Mr. Reverti and his group over at Public Works. We did have a couple of projects that we didn't get really started as planned. One was our storm water and sewer tunnel study, which we've now began some discussions internally and with other community partners that may be able to help and give us some insight on that project. And then as well in procuring a laptop with GIS mapping capabilities. So in hindsight, that kind of works out really, really well, given the direction that WSCS is sort of proposing, that we go with mobile technologies. So to not commit to that unit is actually probably good after the fact. There was some canceled projects. Several of them were related to denial of funding. So a couple of them were within community services around the parking lot and similar. And then obviously the energy upgrades and efficiencies, which was also canceled due to, to the lack of funding. So at this time, I'd welcome any questions in regards to the report or if there's anything in particular with the KPIs that you'd like to ask other members of the team, please feel free.
Counselor White?
No real question. I just want to say thank you so much for putting this out there every quarter. It's amazing to see and it really lays it out in plain language and, and graphics that everybody can understand whether they're sitting at the table or sitting at home. So thank you and the team for everything they do for the KPIs. We appreciate it greatly. So thank you very much.
I echo the same comments, Counselor White. I think we've come a long way in the reporting to simplify, simplify it. And it, it certainly appreciated all the hard work to, to get it to that point. So congratulations and thank you for putting this together. Any further comments, questions? That's it for you then. Keith?
We have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-corp-006 entitled Departmental Key Performance Indicators Quarterly Report Q4 2020 be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.8. 2021 Budget Engagement, the survey results. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you again, your worship. Through you to council. Another information only report. Essentially, as you're aware, we ran a preliminary survey in relation to the budget to try to gauge sort of desired service levels of satisfaction and allow some input from members of the public to basically put forth ideas and that kind of thing. We haven't typically embraced this type of format. We didn't really have any general expectations as to the responses. But as you can see, we did seem to do fairly well with it. We were encouraged by receiving 120 responses. I think more importantly, when you look at those 120, a number of them really tried to add additional comments and feedback. So we did see a good response rate and I, I think it, you know, it's tough to see and read some of those comments. I think you guys can probably understand that in that first slide where I'm, I'm trying to caution everybody to recognize it as what it is, constructive criticism, if you will. Because it is tricky. I didn't want to fall into a trap where we feel like we have to respond to every comment. So I think the important thing there is the, the takeaways from it. And I think, you know, when we looked at it and looked at the way the numbers came forward, it told us we were doing a fairly good job in how we deliver our services. And then, you know, as no surprises, the, the cost of them is where the general questions start to come in and to play. And so I think that really emphasizes the need for us to really provide efficient services and really look at them. You know, when we look at the nature of the comments, and I'm sure you guys read through them two or three times, as did I, you know, they were quite varied, if you will. Some compliments, some valid suggestions around services that we could look at in the future for review or maybe potential divestment. You know, some of the things I think we need to just better communicate on. Some of the overlap are things that we're actually actively trying to do. So it tells us we need to promote ourselves a little bit better. Lastly, you know, I think this one, this is a tough one. I've been struggling on how to, to say this one. And I was trying to look for common themes as I worked my way through the, the comments, if you will. You know, when I was putting this out there and, you know, saying, hey, this is what we want to collect. You know, I was expecting to see a lot of things around, things that we can clearly identify gaps within. So lack of snow removal or potholes laden streets and everything like that. You know, I wasn't expecting to see a lot of comments where it's more things that are apparent or perception. And there was when you worked your way through those comments and if you really weeded through them, you'd see some things where it sort of shows that collectively we have as a group, you know, weather management or council, we, we do need to strengthen how we function as a unit. It's a bit of a tough one to sort of say, but it did show that there's room for improvement in how we engage with our members of the community and support them. You know, it looks like coming out of COVID, there's going to be some challenges. And there's definitely some clear direction and leadership that's going to be needed. So I think, you know, those were my personal takeaways out of it, a little bit of food for thought, if you will. And so I was encouraged with the way it came through.
Counselor Adams?
So I really enjoyed the report. Being a counselor, you have to have thick skin to take all comments. But the fact that people were engaged in the municipal politics is the best takeaway within this thing. Perception is everything. So maybe as a group, we learn how to communicate together and effectively as well. So certainly that's probably a key point as well, but engaged municipality, that's the takeaway. And hopefully maybe next time we get 300 people involved and even if there's negative comments, that's all part of the game that we're in. So take it as it is.
If I may comment, I would, I would agree. I thought that was a good response, number wise, for first attempt. I'm, I'm very pleased that you initiated that, your department, Keith, because we've been looking for more interaction from and feedback from our, our residents. I think overall there was a lot of good points, some things we have to work on, some good suggestions. So overall, I say job well done and was well worth the, the effort and we should continue on this basis. So keep up the good work. Any further comments? And we have a motion to receive.
Motion moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-corp-007 entitled 2021 Budget Engagement Survey Results be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.9, Police Service Board Recommendations. Megan Elliott Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to council. The Police Service Board met on February 10th, 2021. And there was a couple of recommendations to council that I'm bringing forth to you today. One of which we had discussions surrounding the taxi bylaw and the process for the drivers to obtain their permits. And we felt that in some circumstances, there are challenges right now for them to get a criminal record check based on staff that was deployed outside of the OPP and just their administration challenges. So they were recommending to council that, that could be looked at case by case, but not for somebody that hadn't had a, a permit previously. So if it's somebody that already had an existing permit, we could maybe push it for this year, but if they're new, they, they have to get it. The second topic was surrounding the parking spots outside of the LaSalle. I have connected with the Director of Public Works since making this memo and he has stated that it is updated within the parking bylaw, but they hadn't fixed the signage on that. So we can know that that staff will take care of that. And so today it's really just if you want to support the recommendation based on the taxi bylaw.
Any further comments? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, that was the one issue with the, the taxi bylaw that we need to deal with tonight. But there are other issues with that taxi bylaw. Because it was done when the town employed the special constables. And so there is a lot of things in that bylaw that fall back on the clerk to do. And I don't think under any circumstances they would be considered normal clerk duties. So I think that as a council, we are going to need to review that whole bylaw, not necessarily change the content, but to redefine who's responsible for doing everything that's within that bylaw. And there is quite a bit within that bylaw, especially in terms of spot checks on, on, on the cleanliness of cabs, yearly safety checks. I can't remember it all now, but we did go over it at Police Services Board. So that's something we need to consider down the road. The OPP does have a problem right now because of their rules with COVID on conducting the background checks. So I think in fairness, we, we should probably pass a resolution waiving that condition for this year due to the COVID situation, but keeping it for new applicants. I think it's, it's just should be done in fairness because otherwise we're going to have taxi cab drivers whose license is going to expire and they're not going to be able to meet the requirements within a reasonable time. And they're going to be unemployed. So that's, that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Through your worship, if I can comment to that. Yes, thank you, Counselor Owen. I meant to mention that as well. There is a lot of language in there when I was reviewing it that, you know, we can maybe look at that, that some of the task can go to the bylaw officer. As well as just some language surrounding the administration process. It notes that their applications need to be notarized, but that's not actually something that I have the powers to do. I can only do like Commissioner of Oath or Commissioner of Taking After David. So just little things like that where it would be best to change it. Because if it's left to say that it needs to be notarized, then that means they have to go through a lawyer for that. And I don't think that that was the intention.
Okay, Counselor White?
So are we looking to waive it for the entire year? I'd be concerned about that. I know myself, working in the healthcare field, we also have to keep up on our vulnerable sector checks. And we don't get to waive it. We have to wait it out. And yes, the, our employers are patient with us, but we don't get to waive it all year because it is a sector check. It is a vulnerable sector check, a criminal sector check. So my concern would be not to waive it for the entire year, but if we're going case by case, I'd be more comfortable with that, to be honest.
I, yes, Counselor Owen, I think we covered off some of that at that meeting. So go ahead, Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I was just going to say the OPP can't do them as quickly as they normally would. They don't have the staff because of work at home, COVID, internal COVID relation. But they also have a priority rating on who gets their background checks done first. And unfortunately for taxi drivers, they are not high on the list. Healthcare workers, I, I don't know for a fact, but I suspect that healthcare workers are much higher on the list than, than taxi drivers. So it's not just a case of getting your application in on a certain day and they'll be done in the order they come. Under the OPP process, Um, under the OPP process, if they have a, a PSW's application and a taxi cab driver's application, they have to follow their internal policies. So that's why waiving it for a year. And as you know, I'm all in favor of, of the background checks. That's one of my big things that I fought for when this came up before. So I honestly believe that due to the circumstances and in, and, and trying to be fair and keep people employed, that we need to take a serious look at waiving it for what, for just this year. But for new applications who we know nothing about, they still must get it and wait. Um, they're not, they won't be unemployed because they couldn't renew their license. So.
Yeah, if I may add, Counselor Owen, uh, what, uh, the Commander, uh, Ryan Dugan said, uh, there's still the option for the owner. If, if they can prioritize, uh, a particular, uh, renewal application or request if there's any doubt or any concern. Uh, so there, uh, it's putting a little more responsibility on the, the taxi, uh, cab owner. Uh, but, uh, it's not, it's not a, a complete waiver, uh, across the board. So I, I think they need a little bit of wiggle room, uh, because of what, uh, uh, from the staffing standpoint, uh, uh, restrictions, uh, through COVID basically, and some of them working home. Uh, so I, I think it's reasonable enough. They follow, uh, the, that format, uh, I, I'm, I believe that the concerns will be addressed. Counselor White.
Yep. Thank you both for clarifying, uh, the system. That's why we listen to each other. So thank you.
Uh, do we have a motion to receive?
So the motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021 dash CLK dash zero zero six M entitled Police Service Board Recommendations be received. That council of the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake adopts the recommendations to counsel from the Police Service Board meeting held February 10th, 2021. And that staff be directed to present an updated regulating taxi bylaw to council for consideration with amended language for clerk duties and that relief may be given on the requirement of yearly criminal record checks to existing permit holders for 2021.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item, uh, seven, uh, consideration notice of motion. Uh, we will be receiving a motion from Counselor White. Uh, you will require a seconder.
Do you, uh, do I get to go through my spiel first before? Yes.
You, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I was first made aware of this program from a news article back in January. Uh, the municipality of Matawa, along with the Let's Remember Adam campaign, had partnered with Bus Patrol, um, to launch the school bus safety program in that community. They were the first in the jurisdiction in Ontario to implement the program. In the weeks following, uh, many members of the community either messaged me privately or tagged me on social media. And it was at that point that I decided to investigate a little bit further, including discussions with, um, fellow council member Casey Owens, and I'll let him speak after. Um, after announcing my motion, Northern News, um, put out a little article and representatives from US Patrol actually got ahold of me, uh, through email and provided me with an 18-page PowerPoint presentation that I forward to you on the weekend. Um, and I did also receive support, uh, a letter of support from the public health promoter in, of the Tamiskaming Health Unit, um, to go along with this motion. I do have some questions myself because, um, just like anything, if it seems too good to be true, it usually is. It's supposed to be no cost to the municipality or the, uh, school board. However, what occurs if fines don't generate enough revenue? So I do have questions. That being said, I do feel that it fits in with our strategic goals and increases the safety in our community possibly. But, um, I feel like Casey may have some input. Um, that kind of counteracts all my positiveness. So I'll let him speak too.
Well, that makes it sound so negative when you put it that way, Counselor White. Um, it's just, I reached out to one of the main, uh, bus operators in the region. And this has been brought forward by different municipalities in Tamiskaming and Porcupine. And for some reason she didn't go into the details, uh, the municipalities backed it. One thing that comes to mind is most school buses, I know for the French board and the French boards, we already have cameras. There are just three cameras on every bus and they have proven to be successful. Um, it is that buses that come to Kirkland don't only operate within the municipality of Kirkland. So I drove a bus for almost eight or nine years out to V-Town. So, but I picked up kids in V-Town, Larder and Kirkland Lake. So if this is a partnership with the municipality Kirkland Lake, what happens if someone crosses your school lights when you're on the highway? Or if you're in the municipality of McGar, or township of McGarry or township of Larder Lake? So, so what happens in those circumstances? Do we need to get a partnership with all municipalities where these buses run? Uh, with the MTO, because a lot of our buses do highway, uh, pickup and drop off. So it's something that might need to be looked into a bit more, um, by staff when they explore this, uh, that this program. But on paper, it looks great. I mean, if we can, as a bus driver, as you feel kind of useless when your sign is out and the car is about to cross, you see it coming, but there's nothing you can do. So this adds an extra tool to be able to make sure that the drivers do, that do pass on that stop sign get the proper fines.
Uh, Counselor Owens, uh, can I ask you a question with regards to the, uh, uh, the transport, transportation company? Was there any, uh, uh, negative feedback, uh, or concerns about the cost of installation and procurement of those, uh, particular items?
It was paid by, it was in the, uh, tender process when Gran Higa went out to tender a few years ago. And I'm not 100% sure who absorbed the cost if it was the, the operator or if it was passed on to the, the school board. But somehow it got settled because there's cameras on these, there, there's at least five, uh, six bus runs in Kirkland Lake that have cameras on them and they, they have caught people, uh, passing on the lights.
Okay, so it, it moved forward. That's good. Yes. Any other comments? Can we have a sec? Oh, uh, Counselor Owens? Owen, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, um, uh, whether Counselor White contacted any community that is in the program to get their feedback. Um, in theory, I think it's great. But as Counselor Owens said, some of our buses already have it. I'm not sure who paid for those. Um, it would definitely, it definitely be a big deterrent to really publicize the fact. And then I'm, I'm surprised that the, the French school board hasn't already publicized the fact that they have it on six routes in town. Um, maybe they have, sorry, I apologize. Cause I, I'm, I'm not in touch with the French. Uh, I, I don't speak French and I can't read French. Um, but, um, I, I, I read that, I saw the same news report, probably the same news report that you saw and I, I kind of got nervous when it said there was no cost to anybody. Um, and that's the scary part for me because somehow this company that's promoting it is, is going to be making money. They're not doing it out of the goodness of their heart. And maybe, um, there are other options that we could look at that in the end would make us come out financially, uh, further ahead. Uh, and at the same time, uh, increase the safety for, uh, children on the buses.
Counselor Owens, or sorry, Counselor White.
Oh, so to answer Rick's first question is no, I didn't actually go so far as to contact other municipalities. Um, two years ago, I definitely would have gone all in investigation on this, uh, issue. But we are learning the difference between staff scope and council scope. Um, so I just did a preliminary, does this seem good? And is it worthy of staff investigation? And that's all I'm asking for today is support to have staff investigate further to find out whether this is a good opportunity or not.
No, Counselor Owen, sorry.
Hey, sorry, I reached out to the, uh, the manager of Willard Bus Lines, who was another operator in the region. And the operators had to pay for those cameras. So to satisfy the tender process, you have to have cameras on your buses. And it's not just Kirkland Lake, it's the entire District of Tamiskaming and Porcupine, wherever Gran Higa has, uh, buses, those buses have cameras on them.
Thank you for that clarification.
And I'll second it if you need.
Okay, then we have a motion by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Owens.
Be it resolved that staff be directed to investigate a partnership with Bus Patrol out of Quebec and the District School Board, Ontario Northeast for a camera monitoring system for school buses and report back to council by April 30th, 2021.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Item eight, introduction, uh, reading and consideration of bylaws.
We have two bylaws this evening, moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be ready first, second and third time numbered past, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero one three, being a bylaw to adopt an emergency management program and emergency response plan for the town of Kirkland Lake and to appoint a community emergency management coordinator. And just to note, this was just a housekeeping item where we had to update a little bit of language in.
If I may comment, uh, the material that you sent with it was very helpful for both myself and I believe for Counselor White is the, uh, deputy, uh, uh, mayor at that point in, in my absence. Uh, so, uh, that was much appreciated. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Motion carried.
Second bylaw moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second and third time numbered past, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero one four, being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute a maintenance dig agreement with Enbridge Gas Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item nine, questions from Counselor, Council to Staff. None noted. Uh, notices of motion, item fifth, uh, night, item 10, sorry.
I, I, I have one.
Yes, Counselor Shaba.
Okay, um, I don't know how the process goes, but, um, I'm going to be bringing a motion next meeting for the, uh, staff to investigate the possibility of, uh, lighting at the, uh, King Ross Pond, uh, trail perimeter.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, require a motion to accept that? Notice.
We do not, I have noted in the minutes, uh, that Counselor Shaba is going to bring forth that. And, uh, that's all we need for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselors' reports. Counselor White.
Uh, so as Pat stated last meeting, um, a report from the Roma Conference. Unfortunately, I didn't get as much out of attending this, um, conference as I did, uh, attending AMO. We had some difficulties with our delegations, setting up delegations. So we didn't get that one-on-one feedback like we did, uh, last time with the ministers. Um, I attended this only the second day of Roma. Um, as you may be aware, I'm now full time. So my time is not as free as it used to be. Um, but I did catch a session with, uh, the Honorable Mary Ann Monsef, Minister for Women, Gender Equality and Rural Economic Development. Um, as you can imagine with her portfolio, she covered varying topics, uh, including COVID, housing, the universal child early learning system and the future for rural Canada. Um, I was really taken by the advertisements of the municipalities of Braceridge, Centre Wellington and Guelph. Um, they've been using their asset management programs and real data-driven information, um, to approach the needs of their community while at the same time decreasing, um, the risks and liabilities for their corporations. Then I also attended, um, the question period with many ministers involved and a mediator that was firing off, um, I guess, pre-written questions. So a lot of topics covered there too, like COVID funding, insurance rates, cannabis producers, high-speed internet and broadband, the Freedom of Information Act and how its framework is over 30 years old. So there was a lot going on. Um, it's fair to say that it was worth our time informational-wise to attend the conference virtually, uh, virtually. But I think that going and seeing everyone face to face will be much better, hopefully 2021, 2022. So yeah, so thank you very much, uh, council for allowing me to be a part of that.
Uh, just before we, while we're still on that subject, uh, I'll get back to you, Counselor Shaba. Uh, I'll try not to, uh, duplicate anything that you said here. Some of the highlights were the Premier Ford announced the 2021 funding envelope for the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, which this is probably old news now, but we are receiving 608,0054. And the municipal, municipal affairs, uh, launch of a $40 million uh, uh, fund to help, uh, small and rural, uh, municipalities to modernize their efforts towards service delivery. Uh, there are a couple of the deleg, delegations, uh, that included topics of the blue box, uh, transitioned to, uh, producer responsibility, uh, economic recover, recovery from COVID-19, uh, broadband service in rural areas, policing, community paramedics, community safety and wellbeing, as you noted, Counselor White. Uh, just on, on that note, on the community safety and wellbeing plan, just a short update. Uh, D-SAB, uh, Counselor Adams and myself attended the last virtual meeting. And, uh, they have agreed to coordinate, uh, this plan for the district. And, uh, the last update I got, uh, was from, uh, Mayor Kerman Kidd in, uh, New Liskard. And, uh, D-SAB was, uh, going to meet with, uh, the executive from the Tamiskaming Municipal Association to start to formulate, uh, the plan and terms of reference. So, uh, we'll hopefully get an update on that shortly because it's, we were hoping it was going to go away in some uh, aspects, but, uh, uh, we should be able to get, uh, more information on that soon. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks. Thank you, uh, Counselor White for that, uh, report. Uh, Counselor Shaba.
Okay, let me turn this on. Oh, yeah, it is on.
You're on.
Uh, okay, um, I just want to quickly report, uh, to the council that, uh, three weeks ago, I attended, uh, what I call rookie training, uh, municipal governance. So, uh, I guess I'm a rookie, so rookie training. Um, uh, it was conducted by Nigel, I couldn't think of his last name. Uh, Megan was in attendance too. The guy was very, very knowledgeable. And there were two sessions, one on municipal governance and the other session was, uh, municipal finances. Was very informative, uh, very engaging and, uh, planning to put some of my, uh, what I've learned from that school uh, into practice as we'll go along. So I'd like to thank the mayor, the clerk for arranging that for me. And, uh, thank the council too for letting me participate. And uh, thank the council too for letting me participate. Uh, this guy is really very, very knowledgeable and uh, if you guys ever need a refresher in future about uh, things relating to municipal governance, I really highly recommend him. That's it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Shaba. Uh, councillor Owen?
Yeah, I just wanted to express how happy I am that uh, Tomiscaming's returned to the uh, green rating and the COVID. Um, I was really expecting it a week earlier, I was hoping it would be a week earlier for uh, our businesses and for our mental health. It's been difficult for people uh, with a stay-at-home order who um, who deal with mental health to, to, to stay at home and not have the interaction with others. Um, I would like to strongly encourage residents of Kirkland Lake to support the local businesses uh, now that they are open to the extent that they can be. Um, we rely on those businesses. Uh, those businesses play a big part in our community in terms of sponsorship of uh, youth recreation and adult recreation. Um, I know over the years with my involvement in, in uh, youth recreation, I, I never got turned away by a Kirkland Lake business. So it's important that we support them and that we help them. It's been a difficult year for them and uh, I just would like people in Kirkland Lake to, to really think about it. You know, if you're gonna save ten dollars, is it gonna cost you twenty dollars in gas to drive there? You know? These are the people that are there day in and day out, helping making Kirkland Lake what it is. And uh, I hope we all support them as much as we can. Thank you.
But if I may make one more comment and uh, it's in uh, relation to COVID nineteen. Uh, as we know, there was quite an outbreak in uh, North Bay. Uh, it kinda really hit home, a good friend of ours, uh, uh, an acquaintance uh, of, of a good friend of ours and uh, we know this person uh, passed away this morning from COVID nineteen, he was sixty-five years old. His wife contacted it and his two grandchildren. So it does really hit home. We always think it's not gonna happen to me, but if we follow the guidelines, it's gonna make a huge difference in everybody's life. So uh, my condolences to all the people in North Bay for uh, I believe now there's twenty-six positive testing from that uh, building. Uh, it's, it's very challenging, but if we follow the restrictions as, as we have been, uh, we've been a little bit fortunate, but I must say uh, a big shout-out to our Tomiscaming Health Unit for the leadership uh, through this period. Uh, we can see how change uh, can happen so quickly, but uh, so far it's been very good, so keep up the good work through the health unit. Thank you. Uh, councillor White, sorry?
Sorry, so I just have another thing that I wanted to mention. I had uh, the honour of um, being invited to speak with a group of pathfinders uh, earlier this month. They are a group of twelve-to-fourteen-year-old uh, female youth um, under the guidance of guider Kathy, who invited me to speak. Um, in speaking with these girls, I was just blown away by their insight to life in Kirkland Lake. And they shared their thoughts and opinions quite freely uh, without filter with me, so that was very interesting. I do wanna share their thoughts um, on the staff and programming at the Joe Maverick Community Complex. According to these girls, nothing can be done to make them better. The people um, at the desk are always so friendly and helpful and they always ask how you are and they mean it. So that is a glowing recommendation from twelve-to-fourteen-year-old girls, I'll tell you that right now. Um, and as glowing as that comment was, the girls also shared their feelings about the need for um, mental health and drug addiction counselling within Kirkland Lake. That's something that we've talked about quite often as adults at this table. And these teenagers and pre-teens also are echoing that sentiment. Um, and their only request was that our community put on more events so we have a reason to gather together as a community and make um, our town a more welcoming place. So I really wanna thank those girls for giving me time and giving me their opinions. It was certainly appreciated.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion to receive the councillors' reports.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried? Uh, additional information, uh, the closure of the Ontario Fire College. Do we have anybody speaking on behalf of that councillor Owen? Do you have a question?
I have a question I'd like to ask concerning this one. I might need the input from the fire chief on this. Well, so I did some research, on paper it looks good that we don't wanna lose the one fire training college we have in Ontario, but in reading the um, the motion from the solicitor general, or not the motion, the press release, the solicitor general on it, they're saying that we're moving from one centrally-located fire college for the entire province in Gravenhurst to twenty regional training centers throughout the province, which in my mind would sound better, because then instead of sending our firefighters to Gravenhurst, you can, and I did some research, Timmins is one of these regional uh, training centers. So I would think it's cheaper for us to send them to Timmins than it would be to Gravenhurst, right?
That's incorrect. It costs more to send them to Timmins.
Why?
Because you still have to pay the sixty-five-dollar fee for the college and then you're paying travel back and forth to Timmins. Like if it's a week-long course, they're traveling back and forth five times.
But, so in this, a- again, in the same press release, there's two things that stick out. So it says that it's got the endorsement or the backing of the Ontario Professional Firefighters Association and that part of their courses have moved to online. So you do the, 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 the written stuff online and you just have to go for the practical stuff, so it would reduce your costs. So is this accurate on the Ontario government's point of view? Or is there again, something missing here?
That's not accurate either, no.
So you would recommend that we support this motion?
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, councillor Adams?
Yeah, being an active member of mine rescue and emergency response team, I have my mind. Uh, I cannot see going to online training for a fire department being the most effective way for hands-on, when these people are there who are gonna save your life in a matter of minutes, which is most important, so uh, hands-on is the best uh, before even getting to go online.
Uh, go, go ahead councillor Owen.
Yeah, I believe that um, and, and chief can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that the uh, the uh, training in Timmins is done through Northern College. And Northern College is gonna be making a profit off offering those courses. Um, the provincial government's not interested in, or shouldn't be interested in filling their pockets and I think that can partially explain the expense difference. Uh, I know I've had this discussion, uh, I believe with the chief uh, quite some time ago and I was shocked when I found out it, it was actually cheaper for us to go to down south, well, central Ontario for training instead of just a, a couple hours up the road, but uh, I uh, I certainly would be in favor of uh, of, of keeping the college open. And um, I, I agree with councillor Adams that uh, hey, if, if my life is in your hands and, and minutes matter, I think I'd want somebody that's hands-on trained than watching simulations on a computer or however it's done. Um, so I certainly would support the, this resolution to keep the college open. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? We'll go ahead with the motion.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the township of Evantrelle's motion of support regarding the reversal of decision on the Ontario Fire College closure be received. That council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake hereby requests that the province of Ontario reverse their decision to close the Ontario Fire College as OFC is one of the best and most cost-effective methods for municipalities to train their firefighters, which assists us in protecting our residents. And that staff be directed to forward this motion of support to the Premier of Ontario, MPP John Vantoff, the Solicitor General of Ontario, and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing.
All in favor? Motion carried? Item twelve-point-two Integrity Commissioner Report. If I may address council, uh, bear with me, I've uh, did some notes here. Uh, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to provide some input as to the nature of the complaint. Uh, the complaint surrounds the fact uh, that a confidential report was shared with some staff and council. Uh, two of the staff should not, uh, that uh, received this report should not have been included in that. Uh, unfortunately, when I did uh, send this out in the group mail, which was entitled council, uh, I didn't realize that the, it included these two non-members of council who should not have been uh, privy to this email. Uh, this email was confidential and sensitive in nature, resulting in making it uncomfortable to all due to the sensitivity of the content. Let me say, I deeply regret the error that I made and I take full responsibility for my mistake. It's up to me to make sure or ensure that I'm sending out confidential information to the correct parties. I, I do note that in despite of this, I inadvertently breached uh, confidentiality under the section of the Code of Conduct. Nonetheless, I did not send out that email with malice aforethought or as an attempt to embarrass anybody or staff or council or put them in an uncomfortable position. Uh, council, just a little background here. Council uh, had recently agreed to a relationship restoration facilitator to complete a team building work uh, exercise with council. I felt uh, it would be a benefit for the uh, facilitator to have the full report for some background information and assisting him to putting his presentation together. Not to expose uh, the content, however, to focus in on some of the uh, relationship uh, concerns. In earlier conversations, uh, this was, uh, in earlier conversations with the facilitator, I'd stated that the council relationship was somewhat fractured and in need of repair. In hindsight, I should have asked for our solicitor to forward the report to the team builder uh, workshop facilitator, if he felt it was warranted. I should have not become involved. At no time I had, had intended to share this document with any other party or use of this document in a malicious or callous uh, manner. Nonetheless, I should have requested council direction in initiating my actions. I realize now that sharing the document was wrong under the town's Code of Conduct policy and apologize to my fellow councillors. This will not happen again and I'm taking steps to fully uh, to become fully competent in the rules of our Code of Conduct policy to ensure in-depth knowledge as well as have a clear understanding of the makeup of all group email IDs to avoid such errors in the future. Uh, we, respect, in respect to the solicitor's input, yes, I did ask him if I could get a copy of the document, which would I forward to our team facilitator as I noted. Uh, the solicitor was reluctant and stated that that's not the normal practice under the solicitor-client relationship. He later reluctantly me, emailed it to me separately with a follow-up email December the eleventh, instructing me, as you know, have a copy of it. It should be shared with all members of council, but please uh, as, but please as well confirm that it will be kept confidential. In hindsight, on the solicitor's original intent of the instructions, I should have not sent the document out at all. I did not realize the document also went out to the two staff members, as I said earlier, who should not have received this. It's up to me as the head of council to ensure that I be up to date and, and fully knowledgeable in dealing with confidential and sensitive information. I take responsibility for these errors. Uh, I would ask council members and affected staff, especially uh, clerk Megan Elliott, who got dragged into this, that you accept my sincere apologies for my actions leading to this complaint. And at no time were my actions an attempt to malign staff or council or attempt to embarrass them. I take full responsibility for my actions and I'm truly sorry for my misstep that placed you in an uncomfortable position. I will ensure this is not a repeat of same. What has taken place throughout the ordeal has affected me personally and my family. With many stressful nights uh, playing this uh, over and over through my mind. And I also financially uh, spent money seeking independent legal, legal advice. Thank you for hearing my side. Although it is somewhat limited in order to comply with our Code of Conduct specifically, uh, to ensure the confidentiality of policy is here too. Thank you. If you care to comment, please do. Councillor Adams?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your side. Unfortunately, in the report itself and in the email that was released, it did state specifically, I quote, "I'm sharing a copy of the report to ensure transparency. It is highly confidential and must not be shared outside of council and the member of staff." So to claim it was a mistake to send it to both members of staff is actually inaccurate according to the report itself. So that will not be accepted as an apology, as saying it's a mistake. Uh, and also on the other side of things, uh, even requesting that document uh, did not need to happen as identified within this report specifically. So there was no need to even request that report. Uh, sending it out was a violation of the Occupational Health and Safety Act, which I think very seriously as a safety professional. And also to have gone against legal advice is not something that I also find tolerable. So I unfortunately, as one member of council, do not accept that apology, claiming it was a mistake when within the report itself clearly outlines that you were sending it to a member of staff. That's where I stand on that.
May I comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, I didn't realize that the, the email ID, group email ID included two other staff members. Sounds, sounds naive. You're saying I, I knew. And, and uh, what the uh, Integrity Commissioner said is not totally correct, but I'm not going to get into an argument. I made a mistake. I own up to it, but uh, it, it won't happen again. Uh, I don't understand why you would not accept that as a, a reasonable uh, we all make mistakes. I, I don't think there's anybody sitting at the table here tonight that actually has not sent out an email in error to, to people and wish they hadn't done it. So it uh, was a bad mistake. I, I own up to it. And uh, I, I can't, I can't put the toothpaste back into the tube. Councillor Shaba?
Uh, yeah, uh, I have just two things, uh, if you can help me. What the, uh, the first thing is the group email issue. Have we rectified that problem so that it wouldn't happen again? So if you have to send something to councillors and other staff, so have we, have we done that separately to, has that been done?
I, I don't know councillor Shaba, because we just changed uh, uh, IT people, but we'll follow that up.
Yeah, I just don't want the same problem to happen again to someone else without having it resolved. Uh, well, I, as far as I'm concerned, mayor, um, you know, I, I accept your apology. Uh, I, I'd like to put, let's all put the past in the past. That's the whole idea of uh, doing this relationship-building exercise. That's the whole idea of doing this relationship building exercise, the one that we went through, so that we can at least put the past behind us and not to look at the rearview mirror and hope for better days and spend a lot of energy and time to serve the ratepayers of Kirkland Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaba. Counselor Ivanoff?
No, I also agree with Counselor Shaba. I think it's time to move on. We can go on with this for, forever, but I think it was an honest mistake. I, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't think you did it on, on a malice or, or, you know, you simply, it was an oversight and you probably require a little more training on, on how emails actually work. There has been other people that have been affected by, by emails, as you mentioned, and I, you know, those mistakes have been made in the past. I know personally some, some friends that have got emails that they shouldn't have received, and they impacted them personally. So I think we should just move on because this was an honest mistake and I accept your apology.
Counselor White?
I believe the sending of the email to counsel and it ending up being shared with staff may have been a mistake. Unfortunately, our legal counsel warned the mayor that releasing that report to him was contrary to the OHSA, the Ontario Health and Safety Act. He was warned. He made, Pat, you made the decision to go against legal counsel on that. You decided to act without council members' knowledge or consent. The grievous nature of your decision to get this report was, according to the Integrity Commissioner, an unreasonable invasion of a third party's confidentiality, and there was no necessity to access the report. As council members, we didn't need that written information to continue to do our jobs. The decision that you made may require more than a mere formal scolding. The sending of the email may have been a mistake, but the decisions leading up to it were definitely intentionally done by you.
May I comment on that? What happened, the, first of all, why did the solicitor even bother sending me this report? The solicitor is the one that wrote our Code of Conduct, including the confidentiality aspect of it. He, he was fully aware of it. He wrote the policy, and that's, their name is right on the policy manual that we use. So why did he even bother sending that to me? Why didn't he just say, I mean, I take responsibility for what happened, but why didn't he just say, "No, I cannot send that out to you"? End of story. Secondly, when he, he sent that out to me after, that, that's where, it's a little confusing for the Integrity Commissioner because that was sent to me, and then he sent the email that the email followed after that about sharing this with counsel and him instructing me to share it with counsel. I didn't have any choice after that. I didn't make that decision. He made it for me. Counselor White or Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I, I fully appreciate the stress that you've been under, Mr. Mayor. I, I know from firsthand experience what, what that's like. And being a low-tech guy myself, I can somewhat understand how you sent out the email in error to two staff members. But I come from a business where confidentiality is a, a very important part of doing business. In the media, we recall, we, we call it protecting our sources. Reporters have gone to jail rather than reveal the name of their sources. And in this report that was circulated, in the process of making up that report, because my confidentiality had been burnt in the past by non-staff employees, and because of the high importance I put on confidentiality coming from my profession, I asked more than once if what I was saying was going to be kept confidential. And it was important for that to be kept confidential so I could be totally open and honest with the person that was interviewing me. And I was reassured that my name would not be attached to any comments that I made during that interview. While things I said may be included, my name would not be attached. So I conducted myself as such during that interview. That information was never meant to be seen by you, never meant to be seen by other counselors, and never meant to be seen by me. I did receive the copy of the report. I read what I said. I did not read what any other counselor said because it was none of my business, and I do respect their right to confidentiality. That report was part of a process of rebuilding relations. We received legal advice as a council, and we came to a consensus in which you were included, that our solicitor would keep that report in his files, which once again gave me an added level of assurance that what I said was strictly confidential and would not be shared. I don't know why you requested the report. I know why you said you did now. I don't know. I don't know why you went ahead and requested that report after we, as a council, including yourself, had reached a consensus that it would not be shared and did not think to go back to counsel and say, "Look, I need this report because it needed to be forwarded, or I want our lawyer to forward it directly to the facilitator." I am very offended that you acted on your own. I'm disheartened. And had I known this report was going to be made public, I would not have said a lot of this, well, not made public, but being shared, I would not have said some of the things that I said in that report. So I am extremely upset by these actions and the ramifications that this will have for years to come. This was not team building. This was team destroying. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Owen, we all make mistakes. You have, anybody at the council table probably has. And there is a time for forgiveness and do whatever is possible to make sure it doesn't happen again and move on and start working for what the people of Kirkland Lake expect us to. They had voted for us to do the best job for the municipality that we can. I dropped the ball. It was poor judgment. I admit that. I, when I spoke with the lawyers the other day, one of the things they said, "Yes, it was a mistake. You have to move on. You have to apologize." And also, one of the comments, they said, "This is not the first time it's happened. It probably won't be the second." It won't be the second for me, I'll tell you. I've learned the lesson the hard way. And one of the things they, the example they used was a lawyer in Northern Ontario accidentally in a similar situation, sent, sent out a client's file to every member of the Law Society in that city. Quite honestly, they weren't, they're not being subject to the public flogging or lynching that's, that's happening right now. That's my fault. I'll have to live with that. But I do apologize, as I said. There's not much more I can do other than learn from that lesson and, and carry on accordingly. I don't think I have to get down on my knees and start begging. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, um, maybe, like, was it Owen or Owens?
Owens or Owens, yeah. Which ones? So me? Me? Okay. So first, you know what, Pat, I agree. We need to move on. The mistake was made. You apologize, but we're also public officials. We're held to a higher standard. I, I, as a teacher, I'm held to a higher standard. I could never take that teacher hat off. That Ontario College of Teachers is very clear on that one, so I have to conduct myself accordingly. As a counselor, we're held to a higher standard. So there's a difference between a document being circulated by a public official versus a lawyer. In one of your comments, you just said, like, why send it out, the, the report? We're the client. We are the ones paying, we're paying their bill. So as a client, if we ask for something, I don't think they have a choice. But there was a, a warning that came with that, and that's fine. So I'll accept the apology. We do need to move on. We've got two years left in this term. We have to be able to, to work together. I think the comments that we've read in the earlier part of counsel, like the, the treasurer sent out are eye-opening. As a group, we need to be able to work together, but actions have consequences. It, it cannot just be a simple, like, in, in the report from the Integrity Commissioner, there needs to be some type of consequence. I mean, we did it for the last Integrity Commissioner report that came to counsel. We had to be fair. They presented the scenario. This is what they suggested. You were one of the ones that led the charge on that, and, and I agreed. Actions were done, intentionally or not, if we agreed with why they were done. It's not up to me. It was up to the Integrity Commissioner to come up with the result. And we, as a group, had to decide of what the consequences were going to be. And that's what the Integrity Commissioner said in this case as well. Yes, I accept the apology. We need to move on, but there's also needs to be some type of, of, of measure put in place to, not just to make sure that this doesn't happen again, but just to make sure that, that, that there's, there's an action or there's a consequence of the action.
There certainly are consequences to the action, and I'm, I'm suffering from it as we speak.
I, I don't doubt that, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, I agree, and, and I, I don't doubt that for any second, but like I said, there needs to be, like, you speed, you go over 90, you get caught by the OPP, there's a consequence. You can tell whatever response you want to the OPP officer, you're still going to get charged. So in this case, I personally think there needs to be some type of consequence, but I do accept your apology.
And what might that be?
That's something that needs to be decided as a group.
Okay. Counselor Adams?
Yep, so I'm in agreeance with Counselor Owens. Certainly, as within defined does the Ontario Municipal Act, it is the role of the head of council to provide leadership to council. Pretty much, that's the higher standard that you're held to, especially getting the one that's most experienced. My Counselor Owen got in trouble. It was not recommended that he receive further training because he had already received further training. And in terms of privacy being invaded, my personal life was also affected, so I also feel the repercussions of that document being released. And once again, to, we, to quote the report, respondent stated that it was an error that the report went to staff, but the message in the mayor's email forwarding the report is not consistent with the version of events. I was sharing a copy of the report to ensure transparency. It is highly confidential. It must not be shared outside of council and the member of staff. So I received that email and saw that member of staff who was a part of it. One was a mistake, the other was not. So...
No, it wasn't a mistake at that point. I, I was told, I was told by the lawyer to send it out. I did.
Still my turn to speak. So that being said, I'd like to put forward a motion. Be it resolved that a penalty of suspension of remuneration for Mayor Kylie for a period of X amount of days be referred to that the next regular meeting of council for consideration. Is there a second there? Stacy White?
Unfortunately, I believe in this case I have no other choice but to second this. It was a grievous decision that cost all of us. And yes, I believe that it should be coming back for a set consequence, unfortunately. But yes, I will second that motion.
Counselor Owen?
Yes, this may be out of order, but I wasn't able to get into the discussion earlier. Just for the record, I do accept the mayor's apology. I, I, I do believe he does realize the weight, the, the, of his mistake. I do understand what the mayor is going through, having been through it myself, but at the same time, I did face the consequences. I live with the consequences, and I moved on with town business. I don't think consequences and dealing and moving forward town business are to the same thing. I, I honestly, honestly believe that if the mayor had to do it all over again, he wouldn't have made that mistake. But unfortunately, we don't get a do-over. And in terms of, of forgiveness, I, I'd like to think of myself as a spiritual man, and, and part of my spirituality includes forgiveness. It's a two-way street. When you forgive someone, it also is, for me, is a, is a positive thing for myself. So the, you know, and, and that's a struggle for me right now and, and, and will be in two weeks when we come to terms with, with, if, if this motion passes. I'm certainly not, anything I've said was not meant in a vindictive way or because of my own experiences. I spoke from the heart, and I said what I believed was the consequences. So, Your Worship, I do accept your apology. Your apology, I do believe that you are sincerely apologizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion? If there's no further comments, a motion to receive the report?
Well, there is a motion on the floor.
Sorry, go ahead. You better remove me from the, the process.
I just believe that the, the first motion comes first to receive the report, and then is second motion without of Adam, Counselor Adam.
Yep, so I've just blended it together to be one motion to receive as well as that. Counselor Adams, do you have an actual number of days that I can add to that motion, or do you want to just discuss that at the next meeting?
Point, point of order. It would be inappropriate to put, I believe it would be inappropriate to put a number of days in, in, into that motion while the mayor is sitting in.
Yes, I agree. That's why I declared the... So please remove me from the... video.
And who is the chair for this month? You have to take over the chair.
Counselor Owen is the, it would be the acting mayor.
Okay, that, that would be who will.
Please take
Yeah, okay.
So, Your Worship, if you are declaring your pecuniary interest, if you can disable your audio and video, and Counselor Owen will resume, will take the acting mayor position. So we have a motion moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the Integrity Commissioner report on Pat Kylie be received and that a penalty of suspension of remuneration for Mayor Kylie be referred to the next regular meeting of council for consideration.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Just so I, I want to make sure that I can see, could, could you please put your hands up again so I can? One, two, three, four, okay, five. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So at this point, I can ask the clerk to invite the mayor to resume the chair, and I will revert back to being a councillor.
Number 13, moving into a closed session, we need, require a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section 239-2 to discuss two land disposition matters, two labor negotiation matters, and one matter involving identifiable individuals.
All in favor? Motion carried? We'll have a short, we'll have a short break, couple of minutes.
Go ahead, Your Worship.
Okay, item 14, matters from closed sessions.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that council hereby approves the memorandum of settlement dated January 28, 2021, between the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake and the Kirkland Lake Firefighter Professional Association Local 573, and that staff be directed to consolidate the collective agreement and present it to council with an authorizing bylaw to execute the collective agreement at the next regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that council hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake and the Ontario Nurses Association, where all classifications will receive a 1.75% rate increase for years one, two, and three, and that staff be directed to ratify the collective agreement and present it to council with an authorizing bylaw to execute the collective agreement.
All in favor? Motion carried? Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number 21-015 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February 16, 2021.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that council adjourn the February 16, 2021, regular meeting of council.
All in favor? That's it. Thank you for your overwhelming support.